Said after that we have ninety dollars left in one of them. I didn't see a note that said we're over, we're due. We haven't covered all of it, it seems, okay, but we're gonna be running short on.
Yes, that's only one. Whatever one I attached to too. And I know after that payment.
Westland Circle Extension.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that one's going to you. On which, they just got started.
Yeah, but they've done fourteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, making progress.
Alright, so we have this with that. Um. Flying through, do people, does anyone have comments for the forms?
I do not.
Even though Roger's not here, Raj is the one, Roger, Raj is the one who.
Cheering.
Set him up and move those along. Do people have thoughts or additional comments, things that might be needed on the forms? And the forms were in the package last time.
Are those gonna be like in a test mode or something online, so. People can see how they actually work.
I don't know if they were gonna be, planned to be in a test mode, I guess we could. There, he said that they've been applied other places and they work in other places, so.
Okay.
He wasn't worried about them not working.
Were those, were those finished, the ones that he gave us last week, last time?
No, because we're gonna make some changes. Uh, there was a couple, there was some things that were for officially used that were on the top and then it was another thing at the bottom, so we're gonna rearrange it.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yes, right.
And I didn't see that change made, but we're gonna try to get any other changes from people.
Yeah, I didn't see any email in the last two weeks on it.
Okay, so maybe we'll continue that to our next meeting, are there other, did anything else come to people's minds of things that need to be done on those forms?
Nope.
Because I think we're trying to get it so that, because right now we have the site plan review application form, but there's nothing on it that says that we're asking for a variance or, I'm asking for a waiver, or asking for a special permit.
So to make it clear on the form so that it comes forward.
So you check off the boxes to get all those things, so they only have to fill out one form.
Okay.
And then they can ask for all the multiple things.
Everything in one place.
One stop shopping.
Beautiful.
So we're, that's kind of the direction we're going towards.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure that's what it says, so if you could review it.
Okay.
In the next week and we'll circulate another copy, um, with a re-formatted.
And where do we see the most current, whatever we.
He sent an email, oh, the most current is on the town's website.
Oh, it is? No, the ones that he's worked on.
Oh, that was in an email.
His email from a while back, a few weeks ago.
Two and a half.
And he hasn't done anything since then?
No, well, why don't you just wait and I will do the, uh, I'll contact him and make the changes that I know we talked about at the last meeting.
Send new email, okay.
So official will be combined. Alright, um, do people get a chance to go over to the police station, take a look at?
Oh, I didn't.
Well, they're always bringing me over there, but I didn't get to look. Couldn't look up.
That's from the inside, yeah.
No, I did not. Right, right, they bring me right in, I don't know, they don't let me wander around outside. Yeah, they don't let me wander around outside.
Jacket.
No, I did not.
So we're gonna continue that to the next meeting, see, this meeting's flying along.
It is, should like we arrange a time for more than one of us like go over there and like.
Yeah, that's fine, I can try to do that if you want, but it's hard enough trying to figure out people.
I know, I know.
The second and fourth Wednesdays every month.
Right.
I can do it.
Apparently it's not even working out.
Well, it's so far, yeah. Um, so I'm happy to do that.
If you're.
What dates or what time is good, like a.
Weekends?
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 Sure, what time?
Or, or what time you leave for work in the morning?
On weekends I don't go to work.
No, I mean weekdays.
Uh, I get school delivery, so.
Okay, alright, yeah.
But evenings work, it's late until seven thirty, eight o'clock, I've got practice Wednesdays and Fridays.
Alright, and I'm busy Tuesdays.
So Thursday?
This is good, uh, but what time do you wanna go over, like six? Seven?
We're talking tomorrow?
I've got a meeting tomorrow night at six.
Next Thursday?
Yep, next Thursday.
Okay.
So what's that date, do we have a date?
Third, May third.
May third, really, next Thursday?
Yeah, believe it or not, May third.
Crazy, wow, we can't even get on the fields yet.
Um, May third at when?
Seven o'clock, is that late? Well, just thinking for Mark, because six is a struggle to get him out of work. No, seven's okay.
Seven?
Seven's okay, I mean if you wanna do like six thirty, I mean. Just do seven, seven.
May third at seven, okay.
So, police station. And I'll talk to, I was supposed to talk to, uh, the DPW director.
Yep, okay.
And find out, because there's two fences now, and the question is, is in the impoundment yard, there's one section, if the fence they're proposing is here, the impoundment yard. Has the, the mess of the chain link fence and the razor wire on top, there is a neighbor up there, but he was saying that they're talking about doing a fence farther up on their property. So if that's up there, they don't need to do this return on the fence.
Further up, okay.
As long as it's up there, I don't really care which way they do it, as long as the neighbor can't see the chain link fence.
What's going on, yeah.
You're talking about a fence on the police station property, or on the neighbor's property?
They were talking about it on the neighbor's property and the neighbor was okay with that, as long as the town.
I remember at the public hearing they talked about that.
I see, that he was gonna pay for the fence on his property.
Town's gonna put up a fence on their property, which, I'm not sure how or why, but.
At finger range, yeah, okay.
Not my issue, I don't mind either way.
Hey.
Oh, there we go.
That's okay.
Sorry, we here earlier than we thought.
Oh, I make a noise, traffic.
All the traffic was just on this street right here.
It's alright.
All the traffic was just on this street.
Oh gosh, no, ninety five south, four ninety five north.
Oh goodness, too far away.
Alright, so we have a D and F or a group, um.
We did minutes already and talked about forms.
Alright, so it's, we have a posted public hearing at seven o'clock for site plan review for proposed expansion of an existing building at one twenty seven Hartwell Street. Do we have a announcement from the newspaper, can you read that?
Sure, uh, this is the planning board, town of West Boylston, notice of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April twenty fifth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM, at the West Boylston Town Hall, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, in the board meeting room, first floor, for a site plan review application submitted by McCarty Engineering for D and S Realty. One twenty seven Hartwell Street, as required in the zoning bylaw, section three dot six. The project is for the proposed expansion of the existing building located at one twenty seven Hartwell Street, West Boylston. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting at which time you will be able, you'll be rather given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, whose hours are nine AM to four PM, Monday through Wednesday, and nine AM to two PM, Thursday and Friday. Vincent McNally Chair, West Boylston Planning Board, this ran in the, in the Telegram and Gazette on April eleventh and April eighteenth of twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Paul, alright, and those are the green cards, we're all set, and do we get the original of the newspapers, or, no?
No.
Okay, work on that. Alright, uh, McCarty, Patrick, do you wanna do the presentation?
Can I stand here?
Uh, probably better.
On that side, okay.
Yep.
So, good evening, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, uh, here with me tonight is Brian Marchetti, Vice President of Engineering, and Steve Mayverdison from DNS Realty. Uh, as was just read, we're here tonight to present to you the proposed site plan for the renovation and expansion of the building at one twenty seven Hartwell Street. Um, the building was originally constructed for Worcester Valve, um, it's comprised of an existing building and a, that's structural sealed roof and a pre-engineered addition that was put on back in the seventies for a total of fifty-five thousand square feet. So that's this original rectangle here, uh, just for everybody, the Hartwell Street's here along the bottom of the page, and Shrewsbury Street would be down here where I'm standing, so going up Hartwell, it's on the right. I think everybody in the room knows that, but, um.
The old town hall.
Yeah, the old town hall was there, yep, um. So, the, the building most recently had CEA, uh, in the front office section of it, and various tenants throughout the back of the building, it was, you know, mixture of all different uses. And now it would be proposed for a single tenant, which is a Codmetics, they're currently in Worcester, and they're looking to move back to West Boylston, they were actually in seventy Hartwell Street at one point, had moved out and then that's how the whole Curtis came about. So the, the site currently has two driveways in off of Hartwell Street, one comes here in between one twenty five and one twenty seven, there's a large parking area existing already on the, um, westerly side of the building. At the rear of the building, there's pavement and existing drive-in doors, and then there's existing pavement, parking area here that I believe was done in two thousand and six. Um, that was all repaved, restripped, and new stormwater controls were installed at that time. So, uh, and then over here on the bottom left corner is one twenty five Hartwell Street, which is the adult daycare center building. So that would remain, and the, uh, the access off of Hartwell Street would stay the same. What we're looking to do is add, uh, an addition off the back of the building, twenty thousand square feet would be for the tenant, which is this rectangle here, and four thousand four hundred square feet would be for DNS Realty. Currently, uh, Steve and his wife both have offices in the front portion of the building, they'd have to move out, they have a garage and tool bay in the back of the building that was, would now be here kind of in the center, so. Uh, they would be in a, a wing of the addition, we'll call it, that would be their office space and then four at-grade doors. So, uh, the existing parking area is basically where the building is going, and then there's some cleared area now that would be regraded and would be expanded to have the loading dock configuration that should look very familiar to everybody, it's basically the same design that we used up at seventy Hartwell. And then a paved turnaround area for truck access, a drive-in door, and then looping back through. Currently, the parking lot on the easterly side is striped in a sixty-degree angled pattern. We prefer the ninety degree, I think it just functions better, so we've relayed that out, we're not changing the limits of the pavement, so this, uh, this edge of pavement is as it exists today. And so that landscape, nice landscape area that's there would remain between us and the abutting property. Uh, just reconfigured the striping in this area, widen the driveway out, uh, here, because it does get a little narrow and a little bit wonky coming around the front of the building there. And then, uh, slightly widening out the driveway here to be thirty feet, so the truck access can come in, they can loop around and go to the docks, they can, and then be able to go out either way. The parking lot on the westerly side, it's, uh, it's original to the building, it's in pretty tough shape, it's all alligator cracks, so that, this whole section, the driveway in, the whole parking lot would be reclaimed, so full pulverization, graded and paved. Along the back of the building is all new construction pavement, and then this pavement's in good shape, uh, because it only dates back to two thousand and six, so that would be some maybe crack filling and striping to clean that section up. We're proposing new sidewalk here along the building to maintain access to the existing doors and also to create access to the office area, uh, for the DNS space. The loading docks that are on the westerly side of the building at the front now are gonna be abandoned, um, right now there's three loading docks and a big crosshatch area, so, uh, that's gonna all become green space and that crosshatch area would just be striped. And all the loading, truck work, truck activity is being moved to the back of the site. The, uh, plans were submitted, uh, originally back in March, standard practice with the town, they were sent to VHB, who, you know, was great, great getting back to us right away, and I appreciate, uh, Wayne and his team's effort for doing a quick turnaround on the review letter. Which gave us time to, uh, review his comments, address them, and then submit a revised set of plans back on April eleventh. And we submitted those plans along with a, uh, response letter, so it took point by point, VHB's comment, and then our response to each one of those comments that I believe Wayne and his team have had a chance to review. As far as impervious area, we're reducing impervious area on this side, the, now that currently sheet flows off, and so we're proposing to maintain that same drainage pattern. However, we are doing some improvements, uh, making a small depression with some stone check dams to hold some of that water back and improve water quality going off that area. The new section is in full compliance with stormwater management guidelines, so that's a conventional catch basin to manhole to infiltration basin, excuse me, my allergies are killing me this past week, so I keep having, I apologize. So we have an infiltration area here, there's two existing outlets to the wetland resource area that's at the top of the page. Uh, one was from the original building roof leaders, and then the second was a part of the work that was done in two thousand and six, uh, that's the outlet for the, that recharge system that currently exists in this area of the site. So our new, new drainage is, um, conventional, uh, catch basin, manhole, infiltration base, and then we tie into that existing outlet. So by doing that, we don't have to go into the hundred-foot buffer zone at all, um, so we avoid any conservation-related issues and.
Where is the basin, underground?
It's underground, yep, that's shown on sheet three.
Okay.
Um, so that allows us to maintain this, the dark green is the existing tree line being maintained. We went out and GPS surveyed and located that tree line so that we could accurately depict it, so we're not going anywhere near the wetlands, uh, which is, which is good. It's an existing building, so we have, uh, city water for both domestic and sprinkler, there's two risers in the building now, so one serves the front half of the building and one serves the pre-engineered addition, we'll be able to tap off the rear one to serve our proposed expansion. Electric's there, water's there, gas is there, so we don't have to go out into Hartwell Street for any utility cuts, which is nice, so we don't have to disturb that pavement surface. Um, the site's actually really green, as you can see right now, there's a lot of green area on the site and we're increasing that, you know, for example, in this area where it's paved, we're, um, taking away that pavement and putting back lawn area. And we had Larry Green put together a landscape plan, this is just our layout and materials plan, so it really doesn't show all the plantings that are proposed, but it included in your set is the landscape plan that Larry put together. Um, so if you'd like, I'd like to quickly run through the comments and the responses, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, ones that might have issues, we don't need to do every item, if everything's taken care of, let's just keep moving.
So, if I, if I could suggest, Mr. Chairman and Patrick, so, um, Patrick accurately stated, uh, we provided an original comment letter on March twenty ninth, they responded April eleventh. We've got a letter about ninety percent complete, I wasn't able to get it out to you guys before the meeting, we'll get it out the next day or so. Um, Patrick and his team have addressed most of the comments, there's probably just a couple that we can find out, that has worth discussing with the board, um, so let me do, Patrick, if that's okay, I'm sorry, run through those.
Yeah, that's right, sure.
Um, so, comment, um, relative to section three point six, D one F has to do, this is kind of silly, but I guess I gotta ask the board if it's okay. Um, your zoning requires that, uh, survey plan be stamped by a, a licensed plan surveyor. Um, they're asking for a waiver for that, and I guess you guys are gonna stick on the P or something instead?
Yeah, we, we have a record survey of the plan that, that Stephen had done, because he's owned the building for thirty-plus years, so there's been numerous surveys done over the years, the most recent one in two thousand and six. So we have the two thousand and six CAD file for that existing conditions, and then we went out, uh, with our own GPS equipment, and like, uh, for example, the tree line. We went out and, and verified that, we verified edges of pavement, the utilities aren't gonna change, they're there, they're under the ground, um, so we just went out and supplemented that to be able to do our design, um, so.
So, I guess the question for the board, are you okay with that waiver, so you don't have to necessarily design that right now, but that's just something that's to be discussed.
And it seems, it seems reasonable, there's no.
Agreed, yeah, it's kind of silly, but it, it does say that it must be stamped by a, a PLS, so. Um, three point six D one M has to do with, uh, location, flow, volume, and timing patterns of existing proposed traffic. Uh, basically, uh, Patrick's team have, have described the fact that, you know, the building was, uh, constructed in nineteen sixties and seventies, it's changed, last fifty years, blah, 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 blah. And they, basically, they're, they're stating that they don't believe that the traffic volumes or the patterns will change much, and, uh, they requested a waiver to provide, you know, a comprehensive traffic study similar to that. I think that's a reasonable request, given the fact that it's an existing facility and they're just adding a small section to it.
Did we get waiver requests for these?
Yes.
Yes, we did, yep. Um. So they are, um, I guess just a clarification, we've got two existing driveways that are both act as egress and access, um, we just wanna make sure that the striping proposed and stop signs are appropriate, just so that people know, you know, to be at least a centerline down the road. So, um, three point six E five and three point six F three have to do with, uh, emergency access, um, and, um, Patrick's team have described that, uh, you know, it's existing facility and fire department's familiar with it and so forth, um, so they have it provided, um, I'm not sure, did you guys coordinate with the fire department at all, Patrick, or, or?
Yeah, we have a letter from the fire department.
You do, okay.
A simple approval, that's all.
Fine. I mean, good thing. Didn't have that, they just.
I talked to water.
Simple turning template, to show that it worked, but it's by department's group, we're all set.
Yep, and the water, um, we actually kind of off our regos, we usually read the, uh, uh, town agents' reports as well after the presentation, but.
Okay.
I can possibly like to go through those.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, the fire department had no, had approval with no comments, water district recommended approval, and the existing water service connection will not need to be modified for this proposed expansion, so they're okay with everything. And the police department had an approval with no comments.
That goes along with not having to cut into paint, you know, if you want to change that.
Yep, exactly. I just got a copy, thank you.
Alright.
So, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, next, um, three point six F two has to do with, uh, comment we made relative to site distance, they've provided, uh, measured, uh, stop and site, uh, distances for the site drive, and they seem reasonable. Uh, under general comments number four, um, it's, it's a detail that I'll work out with Patrick, I think there's a few more notes that need to be added to the plan relative to the location of the ADA ramps, no, no big deal. So, stormwater comments, number one, um, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Patrick, let me just read you my response, basically it has to do with providing test pits for the infiltration system, which they have done that. Um, there was a little discrepancy, I'll read my engineer's comment back to you, the groundwater observed in the test indicates that no groundwater was observed, but also indicates that there was standing water in the hole at a hundred and twenty inches. Uh, please confirm if groundwater was found, and if so, provide estimated depth to high groundwater, so.
Definitely a note that must have been left over on that.
Yeah, there was no.
That's right, you, we, we were down fourteen or twelve plus feet.
Yeah, if Steve wasn't doing an addition here, I'd be mining the material on this site to sell it, it's.
We figured there was just some, oh, it was a discrepancy.
The gravel's beautiful, so yeah, that must have been a whoops left over from the last time we did soil logs that we checked that, yeah, that we checked that.
Um, there's a slight discrepancy in the storm septic detail that you can read our letter and adjust, no big deal. Um, number four parking line. Definitely another technical problem we'll work out with them, no problem on that. Again, we talked about stop signs at the entrances. I would, um, I would recommend, just so that the board has some documentation, uh, if anyone ever raises the question in the future, that you just run some turning templates at the site drive entrances and just put that on a figure or something and attach it to the, to the recital, just to show that the, uh, access and egress from both drives works appropriately.
Okay.
And, that was it, all very minor stuff, so I will finalize this, get this out to, um, Patrick and the applicant, and they can make a few adjustments, not a big deal.
Absolutely, sounds perfect to me, I, I, you know, we worked excellent together up at seventy, um, with, you know, once the review was done and then Jack took over doing construction inspections, as we were doing the work, everything went great, and if anything ever came up, we adjusted in the field and, um, you know, I'm sure we'll take that same approach here.
That's great, thanks.
So, any of those, I just heard you saying, or make a couple revisions on the plan, my ears go up on that, because if we close the public hearing tonight, we can't make revisions to the plan, we can't make changes, so, is there a way to address all those, from that few number of comments? With condition, or is there some way of?
Or is there an understanding that we shouldn't go?
Right, yeah, well, I mean, I'm just thinking about that, so you may want to just wait on that, we may get comments from abutters that.
Sure.
Have major issues, so I don't wanna think we're gonna move on, but that's one of the concerns, so.
If I can just answer that, I think that, um, the remaining things are so minor, that, um, you probably could, um, if, if the applicant wants to close, I think, if there was no other issues in the public, that, uh, you probably could condition those applications, right, without really too much pain.
Um, yeah, in our two cents, obviously, we'd, we'd love to hear from our abutters and we, just as we did up the street, we wanna make sure everybody around us is happy and, uh, agreeable and, you know, we'll work with them just as we did up the street, so, we'd like to hear that part of it, but. As always is the case, the tenant always wants everything yesterday, so, you know, if we could close tonight, we greatly appreciate it and help keep this thing moving along.
Okay, so, was there anything else from you, Wayne, any other?
That was it, was that careful, thank you.
Did we have, we got all the reports from other boards?
Yeah.
Do we have questions or comments from board members?
I have two, first one is I'm surprised to hear about the groundwater being so favorable, since two doors up, we had such a problem with the groundwater being so shallow in that, uh.
Ninety?
Yeah, I mean, that might, it might have just been that it was closer to the, to the, uh, wetlands further away.
We have, we have historic test pit data when they did the other.
Yeah, no, no, I believe I just, the neighbors had such a horrible time with their.
Which, which property?
He's talking about the Verdi's property.
Ninety nine.
I mean, so it was shallow, you know, to get to the, the water table was right there.
Yeah.
So, so I'm thrilled to hear it, I just, I'm surprised.
I remember the, the installation of the parking area and the infiltration, and there was no problem at all with water when they did that in oh six, that Patrick worked on this as well, so.
That's lucky.
Underground is strange, water flows where it wants to go.
Where it wants to go.
Well, it's also geology, so, I mean, this is a different aspect, because you've got the hill and the stream goes between those two areas, so this could be where everything got deposited and the area there was where it got ripped off. So, that was one?
Yeah, I forgot I missed that one.
That'll come back, that was a good one.
Oh, the use, is it the?
Oh, yeah, that was my question too. I didn't talk about the exterior improvements either to the building, so that reminds me.
Well, is it the same sort of industrial use that was there before, are they gonna be doing something?
Uh, no, so, they're, uh, they're, um, medical device manufacturing, yeah, Codmetics.
Oh, it's Codmetics, the same thing that was over across.
So they're on Brighton Street in Worcester, if you've driven down two ninety, you can't miss them, there's this giant sign almost the size of this building on the top of theirs. Um, so they're in similar square footage, they're in fifty-five thousand square feet there, but it's multiple levels, it's an old mill building, so it's terribly inefficient. So, they would be coming here, we would be doing a full renovation of the office area. In the back, there's a mixed build-out between what was the senior, the town hall and the senior center, various other tenants, auto repair, everything's getting demolished out from behind the offices. All new drop ceilings, air-conditioned epoxy floors, it's really gonna, all new paint, it's gonna be a modern, clean manufacturing facility. Um, so it's a huge improvement to the condition of the building over what it is, on the exterior, if you're familiar with it, there's the pumice block at the lower level, ribbon windows, and then there's metal channel with paneling around the top of the building. We're gonna infill those channels with, uh, EPHS, which is, uh, stucco.
Okay.
Is another word for it, to dress up the front of the building, power wash and paint it a nice clean white with block fill paint, and redo the whole top band of the building.
Still gonna have that little thing on the top?
Yeah, the high bay monitor's gonna stay, I tried to convince them to frame in a floor, because there, that's open, floor to ceiling inside, I tried to convince the tenant to frame in a floor and cut in some windows and make a really cool conference room, but it just wasn't in the budget, so, maybe someday in the future we'll get that done.
That's what their office would be.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so, inside, outside, full renovation, all new landscaping, all, it's gonna look like a new facility and it's gonna be really state-of-the-art with fully air-conditioned epoxy floors.
But sort of quiet manufacturing, not really.
Oh, yeah, quiet, there'll be about a hundred and fifty employees is what they're anticipating, uh, over the years, the building's seen more than that from Worcester Valve, CEA at one point was a hundred of, of their own, um, so.
Is it all but first shift, first shift, second shift, like, do you know?
Uh, I think it's all first shift.
I think it's one shift right now, so.
Yep.
And the addition is the same height as the existing building?
Yeah, so the existing building is flat roof to roughly. Yeah, so the existing building is flat roof to roughly say here with the high bay monitor and then it's a pitched roof, pre-engineered building, and so the extension will be that same pre-engineered one and 12 pitched roof. That'll be the tongue-in-groove metal siding like we used up at 70. It'll have ribbon windows, similar construction to 70 Hartwell.
You mentioned 150 employees, how many parking spaces are there?
Oh, there's 237, so maybe about 35 of them are used. Here, so we have about 50 excess.
And you, when you were talking, you had 127, is the building on to the east?
Yep, and then 125. This is the other, we're cutting, counting down as you're going up the hill.
What are we doing with signage? Are we going to have sign out front, one standing sign for the lot?
They're talking about, so at the front here, there's the existing CEA signs that they're going to, you know, file a sign permit to change it to their cogmatics logo. They did ask at one point on whether the building could hold that giant cogmatics sign that they have on 290 and I said, guys, if you sell your building in Worcester, do like the Sitco building in Boston and retain the right to keep the sign for advertising, that, I mean, no one, there's not that many people driving up Hartwell Street that are going to see that giant sign, so that, that idea didn't stick around very long, so, you know, any sign would go through the building department, sign permit application and.
It can be on here, it can be part of the site plan and then it sort of streamlines that a little bit.
Yeah, we're, we're keeping the two existing sign locations, the one at the street and the one at the bu, the front door of the building.
Well, just, you're probably aware of it, but the sign bylaws were changed a couple of years ago to allow for within site plan review.
Okay.
If you plan on getting a waiver or requesting any changes, then it's not going to be in compliance with zoning, the current zoning.
Yep.
Then now, under site plan review, would be the time to request it because we can waive it without having to do a.
Yeah, I would expect it to be in conformance.
And there'll be a condition on that too.
Okay.
About signs?
Signs, yep, because no signs are proposed that.
Oh, just by.
Since no signs are proposed, we haven't approved any signs and they need to come back or go to the, yeah, come back to the town for the design permit. All right, no other questions, we'll open it up to any people in the public. Is there anyone from the public interested in speaking or having questions on this site?
Quick question, is it going to become a 24-hour operation?
No, not, not, it's never once been mentioned to us there would be 24 hours and they, I know that they don't run 24 hours now in Worcester.
Sounds good. Any other questions, anything we need to see? So, let's hear it.
Do you want to close that here?
If there, if there, do you even hear anything where we need to continue this, Wayne?
As I said, a few minor things, I think you can just condition that they supply exhibit as something supplemental, all of it is all just technical, minor stuff.
You want to help me with that one?
Yeah.
And the, so the drawing that you submitted is going to change all of them, is that the?
No.
I think, I think they can submit supplemental exhibits rather than have to change the drawings. If that's okay with you guys.
So that's, that's how we would word it, is we would have a condition that supplemental information be provided to, to, to show what was agreed to at the public hearing, basically.
So if you notice the plans that you have now, I'll have our not-for-construction stamp on them, is standard process until they get approved, so we will be printing a final set of plans that say revision two issued for construction, so we can, we could put issued for construction in planning board conditions.
We need to sign a set of plans.
Okay.
Hopefully whenever the next meeting is that we're going to sign the approval.
Okay.
So if you can have a set there, then you'll make the copies, 12 sets, is it?
Yep.
Or is it six now, I don't remember if it's changed. So, we'll make, we'll have a signed set, so that's what we're all working from the same set of plans.
Absolutely, no problem.
So then they could maybe even make the changes to those plans, then they wouldn't have to submit exhibits. Again, they're all minor technical things, I don't think it's worth all of that here just for, just for that.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review for the proposed expansion of the existing building at 127 Hartwell Street with the conditions as we stated, and we wait for this.
And I don't, I don't remember any other special, we've got standard conditions that we saw in the other building.
Yep, the Asbeld, like, construction monitoring, yep.
Yeah, so those we probably want, we'll draft that, when do you think you can have that done, Mark?
I don't know.
We'll have it done probably before the next meeting and send it out to everybody for review and comments in case we got somebody's name wrong or something.
Yeah, we could have.
For a condition that doesn't feel.
We could have the final plans for signature a week from today, no problem. See that? Sure, he's like, no, but yes.
Yeah, two weeks, we're going to meet two weeks, so as long as it gets there before that. All right, so we have a motion to close, any other discussion? Oh, sorry, second. No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Sold?
Fantastic, thank you all very much.
Another one in one day.
One day, set the record.
Are we done, are we doing approvals?
No, we just closed our public hearing. Oh, they're leaving, yeah, we've got the next one coming, you have another public hearing. We'll approve, plan and endorse it at the same time.
Next week?
Two weeks.
You want to show up next week?
I think it's three weeks.
You never know, I know we can't, three weeks.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's three weeks.
All right.
Wait a second.
We're starting strong?
No, it's two weeks.
That was a one day or a one meeting approval? Do it again. Do it again.
Yes, her 18th birthday. Excuse me, as I go on Amazon and all these things.
All right, we have a public hearing next up, it was 8:07, we're a little bit late, but better than I thought we'd be. We've got a site, a public hearing for a planning, a site plan review for a proposed Girl Scouts Service Center located up on Century Drive just over the Worcester Town Line.
No, I meant for the prior one, we never got the.
We looked at them, they didn't have them, they're going to get them to us.
What, did you mention it?
Brian's saying yes.
Okay, so I just thought of that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So, can we read the posting?
We sure could.
Thank you very much.
This is the planning board, town of West Boylston, a notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 25th, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the West Boylston Town Hall, 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. In the board meeting room, first floor, for a site plan review application submitted by Bowler Engineering for the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Mass as required in the zoning bylaws, section 3.6. The project is for the proposed Girl Scouts Service Center located on Century Drive, West Boylston. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting at which time you will be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, whose hours are 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Wednesday, and 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Thursday and Friday. Signed Vincent Pignelli, Chair of the West Boylston Planning Board, and the telegram and Gazette run dates were April 11th and April 18th, 2018.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll begin it with a presentation from the performance.
Hello again, Suzanne Soddy, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts, and as you've heard, we've been back and forth a little bit.
This camera goes to that one, I think, so we don't want to get too much in the way of that.
Okay, so just to kind of remind you of who we are and what we're doing, we're moving from our location, current location on Gold Star Boulevard in Worcester to this location that you, you mentioned, for a lot of reasons. We have been to the ZBA for variances, which were granted for retaining walls and parking, location of parking setbacks. So, we've been working hard on this, the building will be used for, it will house offices, we have 18 to 20 staff members at any given time, rarely are they ever there at the same time. Most of our work is not sitting at a desk or talking on a phone, it's really out with people, supporting our volunteers, so we don't have that much ongoing office use for the building. It is a program center for girls as well, so we'll have meetings for our board of directors, we'll have meetings with volunteers, training volunteers, and girls. We have, in a similar building that we have in Holyoke, we have a robotics team that's able to meet at our building, you know, so you might have 15 girls and a couple of adults meeting in the early evening, so evening, weekend use, that, that kind of use is what we're, what we're looking at the building for. And I think with that, that sort of reminds everybody of where we are and what we're about, and I'll turn it over to Tony Donato, who is our site engineer.
Thank you Suzanne, members of the board, okay, if I sit on this side?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. So, as Suzanne explained, this is a nine-acre site that's located on Century Drive, that is in Worcester Industrial Park and it's accessed via East Mountain Street and Worcester and there's a couple other adjacent corporate uses, there's a FedEx warehouse facility up there and there's a research lab up to the northeast and abutting to the northwest, there is a senior elder care center and to the south, there is an, another office building. It's a nine-acre site that currently houses some stormwater management facility, detention pond to the north that was constructed in the mid-'90s as part of the industrial park development, was constructed to control the, the stormwater runoff from the development. The site is partially located in the, well, the nine-acre site will be subdivided into two acres for the development of the Girl Scouts facility and the, the town line runs through the site. The site will be accessed via Century Drive on the Worcester side. And we are proposing to construct a 7,400-square-foot building for the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Mass. As Suzanne had pointed out, it's for office and meeting space, it's programmed delivery for the manual drive. The proposed site entrance is located approximately 200 feet east of East Mountain Street. The site is zoned industrial and is a permitted use. On February 15th, 2018, we had requested a waiver from the, to allow us to construct a retaining wall within the rear setback of the lot, which was granted on that, on that night. In addition to the building construction, we're proposing 42 parking sp, 41 parking spaces? 41 parking spaces, sight lighting, 20-foot vehicle access lane around the back of the building, trash enclosure to the northeast corner of the lot that would be not visible from the street, it would be covered by the proposed retaining wall on the northeast side and there'd be a fence enclosure around it. To the west of the site, we are proposing a stormwater infiltration system that will control the peak rate runoff from the site, it will mitigate it by providing detention and infiltration to the site. We're proposing substantial improvements to the, well, I guess it wouldn't be improvement, but we are proposing best management practices to improve the quality of the stormwater runoff to the site and that includes catch basins with four-foot sumps, gas traps, and a proposed mechanical separator in addition to, the basin has been sized to store the prescribed water quality volume before it releases back into, close overland down into the southwest corner of the site through an existing swale and into a 15-inch pipe that connects into the stormwater system on East Mountain Street. Water and electric will be provided by the town of West Boylston. Sewer and drainage is owned and maintained by the city of Worcester and we have applications with the city of Worcester for, as such, and again, all disturbed areas will be loaned and ceded and we're proposing 12 landscape, 12 tree plantings throughout the site as landscape improvements, so. Any questions with regards to the operations? We did receive a letter from Mr. Wayne Amico, I believe it was a week ago or a week and a half ago, we resubmitted earlier this week some responses, went out, we did some test pits to the site and we made some changes and these have been submitted to the town on Tuesday. Given that, I don't know if it would be possible to ask that we could approve this subject to us adequately addressing, I doubt if Mr. Amico had enough time to review the application thoroughly, but it was just something that, I don't know, it's against your policy, but something we'd like to put out there, thank you.
Thank you, I think what we'll do is review any comment you got from town boards, do you have that in the packet there, clerk?
Fire department, last for stairs.
Stairs.
The fire, can I read the fire department?
Why don't you do it then?
Fire department, we're supposed to, as soon as the fire department may offer approval with modifications, the reasons for this recommendation are as follows, for the, the fire, the fire department requests a set of stairs to be built into the three-and-a-half foot retaining wall on the north side of the building to the walkway to the existing sidewalk and fire hydrant where our Century Drive.
Yep.
Across the, across building. This would allow the fire department quicker access to a minimal water supply, so that would be a change, do I, I assumed, did you?
Well, I don't know, Mr. Speaker, we did talk to the fire chief and I don't know, I, I thought what he had asked is that, and this was one of Amigo's comments, is that we provide a sidewalk link to the existing sidewalk on Century Drive, which we have with the revised plans through here, I was not aware of any stairs and.
He's talking about the north side.
Is there a hydrant, oh, there's hydrant over here, hmm.
And how, the retaining wall on the north side, how tall is that?
Could be up to nine feet high.
He's talking about a three-and-a-half foot retaining wall, is there a three-and-a-half foot section?
I think over here is a three-and-a-half foot section.
He's asking for stairs or, so that he could, people could access that side of the, that road to get to the fire hydrant.
Because that's where the hydrant is up on there. There's a hydrant over here.
But it says here sidewalk and hydrant along Century Drive.
Well, that is, yeah, Century Drive is, that's there.
Oh, it looks.
They're both Century Drive, it's all, there's only one road up there. It's a cornered one with the same road on both corners.
Isn't the road that goes straight there or no?
It does go, it's looped though, the road goes up and someday it's going to get built, hopefully soon.
Okay, loops around, yeah.
And then it's going to come around and tie into the other, so it's.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
There's a hydrant located over here, I mean, I would, we could explore maybe providing a link along here, but I don't know, I'd have to talk to Suzanne about it, I think the only problem with stairs is that becomes a maintenance issue during the winter, snow and snow removal, but I can follow up certainly on that.
We don't want children coming down the stairs.
Well, there's nowhere children are going to go in, on that site, I mean, there's no reason for them to be going up Century Drive to the north.
Okay, look.
But, I mean, it's something that's coming from the fire chief, so we probably just.
Do you have children?
I do, they only go where they're supposed to, don't they?
No.
I mean, I mean, it, it, it's a fire department's request, I think what you have to address there.
Just a guy. I mean, it may be a good reason why it makes no sense at all because now you have a nine-foot wall and a, stairway wouldn't work, but it's something that needs to be checked. Yes, I do.
Water district can also review the plans, give thrust out buildings at your drive side of the plan for our water district, do you want to read the whole thing, they had a lot of comments.
Are we, we did receive those comments and we, and our response, I believe we addressed all those, which was, he had some comments regarding providing a, a service to Century Drive rather than, on the northeast corner rather than from the southwest to keep it with under 300 feet so that we wouldn't have to do an outside meter, which we'd be able to do, and he asked us to provide a sleeve underneath the roadway so in case any future maintenance down the road, they could replace the water line though. and don't tear it up, the driveway. And I believe that was the government comments with regards to adding the three hundred feet. And we did confirm that there's no sprinklers aren't required for this billing. And the one inch water service is adequate for the building.
Yeah, cause we got these comments, what is it, April fourteen, nineteenth?
And your current version is an April twenty first version? So it's probably incorporated? Uh, yes.
That's good. I mean, that's what we want to be doing.
And just for the record, the police also reviewed and just recommended approval. No comments.
All right. So any other, oh, well, actually we go with our review engineer. You just got the plans yesterday, so.
We did, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Tony adequately addressed things. We provided a comment letter April fourth. They responded April twenty third. And they actually, there may be a couple of questions I have that I've got to run through right now. But it looks like they actually did address all of our comments. So I applaud them for that. They've, we had a question, this is more just for the board's information. You know, the whole traffic, you know, the unit traffic, I think, that always comes up. They've provided a very detailed explanation of their facility operations, amount of people, and it seems pretty minimal. So I think there's no need for that. One thing I wasn't sure, did you guys request a list of waivers?
Well, the only waiver we have is the scale of the drawing in this special. Okay, a separate letter.
Do you want that letter? Wayne?
I don't need it right now, thank you, Mike. Do you guys require a waiver request for three point sixty-one M, which has to do with location flow, volume, timing of patterns of existing proposed traffic should be provided? I don't think, I, they.
Generally, it's, if they can give a description.
So I think it's fine. I'm okay with that. The one question I have, Tony, maybe you could just explain, under general comments, number one, we talk about the retaining wall and the hydrant location for fire truck to access. And I know you did talk to the fire chief and we just talked to comments that they just had. Can you just explain to me what's happening with the retaining wall and the hydrant? I haven't had a chance to look at the plans closely since I received the letter. I just want to understand so the board's aware of it as well.
So as you, as you stated, so the hydrant is located on Century Drive, I believe, right in this vicinity over here. And we would talk to the fire chief or the fire safety officer. He had said that, you know, provide a link to the existing sidewalk, which is one of our comments too. So we have a, from the main entrance here, if you would, if you're heading, looking out south and head out east, there's a crosswalk here. And this is the ADA compliant. And it's part of the challenges of this site is the drop in elevation, which I believe is like forty, forty feet or fifty six feet from this elevation down to the driveway. So it's kind of a challenge to get an ADA accessible route down to the driveway, Century Drive. So we provided, we were able to provide one along this here to where the, actually, this driveway is where, this sidewalk is where it starts, Century Drive, and it follows through around the industrial park. So again, I can follow up with the fire chief. But that was our understanding is that they could tap off of this hydrant and come around here. We've provided some turning templates for the fire truck. It shows that there's adequate space for the West Boylston ladder truck to access the site and spin around. And one, another question that, or comment that Wayne had, had to have is that we add a wall along here on top of the fence for safety reasons, which we've included a four foot black vinyl coated fence on top of a wall along here and a drainage trench.
I just heard vinyl, you're talking vinyl coated chain link?
Vinyl coated.
Right, but chain link.
Chain is not allowed, just vinyl fence.
Chain link fence is not allowed in the zoning, under our zoning. So it could be any other vinyl fence, but not a chain link.
Sure.
So that, that makes sense. I guess I, oh, you have anything more, Wayne?
A couple, just quick things here. We had a comment about bollards and appears maybe the transformer.
Oh, yes.
You just, I'm not.
I'm sorry, and that's something that I can explain to you. So originally, we had the transformer located in, at this situation, the west corner, west of the building. And when we, the local West Boylston Link Power Company had recommended that we move the transformer to this location because their infrastructure is along here on Century Drive. So that would shorten the run of primary service that they would have to supply. So as such, we had this one location right over here. So that's, we were proposing the transformer. And we did consult with him in regard to the bollards, what he would expect around the transformer. And I believe we just, we're showing like two around each corner. I believe that would be adequate.
That's perfect.
Have you talked to or gotten anything from the Worcester DPW in regards to the flow? Cause all your flow is going down into one of their inlets and then into their drainage system, so.
Yes, so actually on Monday night, we had, Worcester has a, I'm sure you remember with their bylaw that anything within seventy-five feet must come before the conservation commission, seventy-five feet of the catch basin. So even though there's no wetlands in this facility, we still have to, have to submit an application with conservation. So we did, we got some comments which were, weren't really, I mean, one of the things with adding these buffer zones, which you see here on this plan in red that kind of end at the West Boylston line, there is more, wasn't really anything worth mentioning here. It was more like construction sequencing and whatnot. And addition of salt fence around here. So that's one of our applications that we're presenting Monday night to the Worcester ConCon. And we did submit an application with the engineering department for the connection of the utility services to the Worcester system, which is sewer and drainage.
Yeah. If we could get a copy of their approval when it comes, that'd be good.
This is, doesn't really have to do with what we're talking about. But if we, if West Boylston provides the water and they provide the sewer, and the sewer is based on the water usage, like the, how much they charge you? Or is, do they know about that? Does the Worcester sewer people know they're going to have to cock to the West Boylston water people to fight on how much water?
I believe there would be because the whole plaza service, I believe, by Worcester, it comes over here. So there must be some kind of interminable agreement.
I don't know. I just, it doesn't happen often.
Right, right. I'm sure they're, they're getting their money on that, so.
Just make sure.
They did mention the INI P, which Girl Scouts would be responsible for.
Couple more quick things, Mr. Chairman, just for, no, under stormwater. We had a comment relative to using NOAA Atlas fourteen instead of TP forty. And this applicant had no problem just revising that quickly, just for the board's records.
Good, good.
We've had this discussion before.
Yes, that's good.
Are you changing it on my just one?
I'm changing it in the bylaws.
So thank you. And just comment number three under general, just having to do with the Do Not Enter signs. Can you just describe to me, I know we had a comment about you should consider some Do Not Enter signs. And you, in your comment, there's really no place to put them. Can you just go over that with the board so that we can understand?
Sure. So I mean, at this location, it's, the wall is about nine feet. So to put a sign here, you know, would be above the sideline. What is really, it better get hit. But so we were proposing to put a sign just on the, I guess that would be the driver's side. It's one-way traffic circulation counterclockwise in here. And again, this is all two-way up front. So I would suspect that most of the people that visit in the center would, they would pull in here, take a right, and as they come off, they would follow the same path that they came in. This is really just for fire truck access, trash pickup, and occasional delivery for the cookie drive.
Is there any place on, I understand the wall height and so forth. Can you put a Do Not Enter sign anywhere?
On the ground, on the building.
Ground mounted anywhere?
Well, this Do Not Enter sign, this sign is double sided on the.
Sorry, okay. So if you've got one, I'm fine with that. And you do have it on the street, so on the pavement itself, I see. That was it. Very minor things that I think Tony addressed adequately. Can I do owe you or platform response?
Well, it just came Tuesday, so that's not bad.
Seems like they're in good shape.
I had a question. You've got, you need shade trees. You mentioned there's some landscaping plans. Do we have the required number of shade trees? One shade tree for every ten vehicles, I think it is?
I believe.
And tell me what your shade trees are, so it's not a pear or flowering apple?
Well, one is a Bradford Calery pear.
That's a shade tree?
I'm not, this was reviewed by a landscape architect, which certainly. But and I know City of Worcester had a comment that we changed the species so that they were longhorn beetle resistant.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what some of the selections were on, on that.
Okay, well, we've been, we're always looking for like a shade tree that's going to grow to be thirty feet high probably, like a maple. But that's not long, Asian longhorn beetle. Yeah, they don't like those. They don't like those, right. So, but that kind of a tree, when you're thinking about it, whether it's an oak. Yeah, I'm not sure. We're looking for something to give shade. Cause we've had experience, I don't know if you've been in town in West Boylston, wherever the Salter School is, that's like a big wide open parking lot. And there's no shade trees, no shade anywhere. And so after that, the board and the town, the town meeting voted to have shade trees in parking lots. So for every ten parking spaces, you need a shade tree within ten feet or so of that. So if you've got like ten cars, you put a shade tree on the end. It doesn't have to be within every space, but just so that there's a shade tree and somewhere where people can park. And if you notice, when we have parking lots in the summertime and even about this time of year, everybody goes to park under the trees anyway. So it's just, it's good for the community. Something we'd be looking for in this. I don't.
So do you want one of those trees to the other end of the parking lot?
We're showing five trees here for forty spaces that have to be.
That would meet it, as long as they're shade trees, yep.
So I can tell you what those trees are.
We looked at the plan to see if it's got the maintenance for the.
Nope.
Centenary session.
Good question.
I forgot to ask McCarthy.
He's been there.
Well, those are the pinhocks.
I'm not sure how much shade a pinhook gives. I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, so I don't, but that's what we're looking for. So maybe what we do is, that's, assuming, shade trees. That could be a condition. That's not a deal breaker or anything, but that's, the shade trees shall be really shade trees. Not a Bradford pear, which are nice, but they're on a mental.
A pinhook looks like a oak.
It's a full size oak.
It's a full size oak. Yeah.
That is not favorable to the longhorn beetle?
Looks good.
Okay, so a pinhook.
Pinhook works.
Little machine.
That's what Google's all about.
Pinhocks are okay?
Pinhocks are good.
Yeah, so, all right. So we're going to have to do a condition on the shade trees?
This is not a.
Mabel, mabel is a pinhook? Call the library. All right, those are the questions I had. You've got the, we have a standard order. You're looking for, you got variances for the retaining wall and for the parking in the front yard setback?
Is the parking part of that?
You get that area down to the, where am I, west end? That's an underground infiltration or is that a infiltration basin or what's that?
This is an infiltration basin, but it's only about, I think, a foot deep or, and then it has an outlet control structure. It's just, it infiltrates the prescribed water quality volume. And then it, then it has a outlet control structure that slowly releases back to the.
And so that, the site meets DEP stormwater standards? We're going to have to, on this one, this is also a stormwater permit. So we're going to have to vote and review it based on a stormwater permit that it's in compliance with DEP stormwater standards, so.
So the stormwater calculations need to be upgraded.
I'm assuming you guys check that, Wayne?
Yeah, we should, we, we have comments in here about the stormwater. It seems like they addressed it.
And that, the connection to the Worcester stormwater in the street is just the overflow?
Well, actually, it's, what it does now is it's an existence spill that we did the test pits, it kind of, it just, it flows all over this parcel. And then there's a fifteen inch pipe here with the head wall that it just flows into that pipe and then it connects into the street.
All of it then?
And what's, is that a permit? I'm just, we're going to write a condition that we're going to, we're going to ask you to provide the permit from the Worcester DPW for the drainage connection? Is that how we would phrase it or?
Well, for this case, we really don't have a drainage connection. We're not connecting the stormwater to their system. But I guess you could ask for a copy of the, do you want the conservation commission approval?
Is that what it's, it's under the conservation commission approval?
Yeah, that would be it. So before you get a building permit, that's what we'd be looking for, so.
You mentioned there was a retention basin on the property. That's on the other seven acres?
Yeah, the other seven acres.
So you're not touching that at all?
No.
All right. Any questions from the butters? Any, yeah, no other questions from this board? Whoa, this is a good day.
Two?
Sale on site plan review today.
I don't know, staring until the fire department thing is addressed.
Oh.
You know, just to make sure that he's happy with what I'm, they do.
Yeah, they did submit comments.
I mean, just because he's asking for stairs and I don't, in my head, I don't think that the, the connection down to the, at the southern point of the sidewalk is really what he was thinking about. He's thinking about if he needs to run a hose from the hydrant to the building, he wants to not walk all over the place and wrap it around the trees. He wants to go straight from the, you know, from the hydrant to the building.
Well, there is, there is a hydrant located over here on this corner on the survey too, so. And then Larry, we have a fire connection on this building and it's not required.
And you don't want to have sprinklers? I mean, you're not required, but you're not going to have sprinklers?
See?
Okay.
That's, that's, and, there's a hydrant right here located right in front of the building. So let me talk to you more about that.
The hard part is getting, I mean, having a hydrant there and getting the water in the building are the keys.
Now, where's the red cross building? Up there.
Across the street northeast.
That's the one he specifically mentions here. That's the hydrant that gets.
Did I just ask?
Just want stairs between.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
That hydrant is located right here, right next to this light pole.
So he's, he's requesting a set of stairs into this wall that Tony said was like nine feet high, right?
It was a three and a half feet.
Well, it's a three and a half.
It's at the end of the wall.
I don't know.
That's what a sidewalk is though. And I think at the back, let's put comparison.
If there's an existing hydrant in the front, then why would we need to access the one on the side?
What's, Tony, what's the great difference on, in the front where this other hydrant is?
That wall?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's the question.
Yeah, this is three and a half feet long here.
To the, on the side?
On this side.
On the front.
But they're going to drive to the.
Oh, in the front, is it, oh. Oh, in the, all right.
So just a, just a comment I have. I'm not sure, I understand the fire chief's request. I'm not sure I'm super thrilled with supporting a set of stairs in the middle of this wall on that corner. There's a sidewalk, I remember walking it down Century Drive on that side. So if someone comes down and just blindly goes down those stairs, someone could be coming around that corner and you're not going to see them. I'm not sure that's the best place to put a set of steps.
They can't become in the other direction.
I just don't think it's a really safe thing to do, period.
Right.
You follow up on my confusion?
I wouldn't want a set of stairs over there at all.
I'm not sure, but I.
I don't think the fire chief really thought about public safety.
That's what he does.
I don't think he did in this case. All he thought about was whether or not he can access a hydrant. He didn't think about Joe Schmo walking along.
Well, but I think what, he's got a plan when, when they lay the hose and actually respond to a fire, there's a certain way that they like to do it. I don't claim to know it, but there's always, I mean, a way that they bring the line in and feed this, feed the building and feed the fire fighters to do it. So I'm sure that's what he was trying to figure out. And it may be that he just looked at this site a couple of times ago in the previous version, because he, he wrote the comments prior to the review.
Was the ADA.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, but I, I wouldn't approve stairs there. Yeah, no, I don't disagree, but I, I wouldn't approve stairs there.
Was the ADA space there?
I just think it's a bad idea.
Bad idea. People are gonna use them and trip and fall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course they could just jump over the wall.
We did talk to him on the phone about this.
Yeah, 'cause that, that might be...
I think what had, the reason why we didn't call because Mr. Migo had asked us to confirm about the sprinklers, and we did call him, talked to him, and he said he'd be, he say, and the access to the truck to get the template, and he said he'd be fine as long as there's a link to the sidewalk. So he probably has not seen this. Um, I don't know what the process is on Melon Day.
Contact him.
We see these on Tuesday, and then as it gets to...
They haven't distributed yet.
No, we're preparing for these two public hearings and stuff, yeah. So I, I think, um, that's a good comment. What I think we could do is not close the hearing tonight, but I can still do the process of having the approval ready for our next meeting. So at our next meeting, assuming everything goes well and we don't have to make changes and any other things get raised, at that public hearing, we close the public hearing and then we would have the approval ready for signature at that time. So you wouldn't be losing, I know your timeframe is the key. So if we approved it tonight, we'd have to draft the approval and we get, write that at our next meeting anyway. This way, we continue the hearing to get feedback, make sure the fire department is happy and everything is safe, and we'll have the draft approval letter at that time. So that's, we'll try to do our best to kinda keep things moving, but it doesn't seem like a closing of the hearing is appropriate right now.
Yes, midnight.
Bottom line, Mr. Chairman, is that this happens, we get the signed approval the same day.
Same time anyways.
Yes.
Either way.
We'll proceed as if, as the same time. And what do you think about, uh, any of your comments, or?
Yeah, I mean, this, it looks like he's addressed everything. All we have to do is just verify it on the plan and write up a, a book of Google up. We can get that done, you know, next week sometime. It's gonna be a problem.
Does it sound like it's good for you to schedule, or in two weeks will happen?
Yeah, it sounds like they wouldn't be losing any time in this, so I, I appreciate that.
Okay, good.
We just need someone to write the approval.
Because again, it's not mine.
It's you. This is all about you.
No, I did, I did my, I'll eat the cookies.
So I appreciate, yeah, no matter what's going on.
All right, so any other questions? Comments? Do we have a motion to continue?
Yes, I have a motion to continue to whatever the date is next.
May ninth.
Was it May ninth?
It's May ninth.
At the time, we already have two, no, we have one public hearing that night. And then we've got the, uh...
It's the circle.
What time you see a public hearing that night?
Seven.
We have a public hearing at seven. What time was...
Village zoning, I don't believe we're here by time yet. I know we're gonna give about fifteen minutes, but I don't think that's...
What, what's the public hearing?
For the village zoning. We've got the new person at CMRPC who...
No, but the public hearing is...
The public hearing.
Right, that's a new one, all right. So that's new, and there's probably gonna be a lot of folks.
It's gonna be long. I mean, it's gonna be more than an hour.
Yeah, I hope not, but there's gonna be a lot of folks.
You better not talk so much.
Hey, what time is it now? We're doing great, just, we're going in the right direction.
Okay, motion to continue till May ninth at sometime after seven.
Seven, maybe at seven thirty?
I was gonna say, make it seven forty-five. Let's do seven forty-five.
At seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, on May ninth.
Comments kept to a minimum.
At seven forty-five to seven fifty.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I don't know.
Yes, you have a second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
All right. See you next week.
Um, we don't need milars, but however you wanna reproduce them, we could do it on paper. One set on paper or milar, we, uh, we can do either. And there's a signature block on the forms?
Yes.
Davis, great, thank you.
Did they, did they already do the A and R?
We have...
Last week?
No, we haven't seen an A and R for this.
Oh, I thought they did come in for an A and R.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, it's been filed.
Okay.
It has, okay.
The A and R's been filed inside. I haven't recorded it yet.
Oh, that's right, that's, yeah.
So now it's, you're on your own spot? I thought we did that.
Almost there.
Almost, right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you use a copy of the request for waiver and the other departments?
Anybody wanna volunteer drafting an approval letter? Either one, one tonight? Anyone step forward?
Chris, Chris Olson.
You!
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, Chris Olson wants to do it.
Well, it would be appreciated.
I guess it's Raj then.
Oh, that's right, Raj isn't here. He's doing the forms, but okay. All right, next on our agenda is, not on our agenda, but, uh, reports from other boards. We had a, a call for the work on a senior center. They're, they were starting to work. So we have Bill, is it?
Bill Murray.
Bill Murray, oh, no.
How can you remember that, Mark?
'Cause it's Bill Murray!
'Cause he's Bill Murray. You can't think of Bill Murray.
Stripes and everything?
Yeah, that's right.
What is it being named Richard Nixon or something like that?
It's better, right?
I don't know if, uh, you know, I've got a little eleven-by-seventeen handout that I had with color around, little clouds.
With color?
I don't think I got colors on it. Where did you get color?
So, once again, uh, Bill Murray from Places Associates, site engineers for the new senior center. I expect to see you this soon.
Welcome, the feeling's mutual.
So what happened is apparently last Friday, a week ago Friday, uh, the site super wasn't on site. RAC is the general contractor. They won the award. And they brought on a new site contractor, Salt Marsh Industries, and...
Salt Marsh?
Salt Marsh, yeah. And the clerk of the works wasn't on site either. And the, we have a little trench here that says hand dig, eighteen inches wide, two feet deep, which is in the clouded area. And the contractor determined that it was not safe for him to hand dig it. So he, he felt that there were widow makers. He had all sorts of reasons why he did what he did. But effectively, what he did was he clear cut a twenty-four-foot wide swath down where the trench was. Now, the only thing on the good side from my perspective is the town had marked that as a wetland. So I went in there and I did soil borings and I did plant counts at the beginning and at the end of the trench. So I know exactly what the plants were in the area. But yeah, he did, it's twenty-four feet wide. I say sixteen to twenty-four. I went out there Friday, last Friday, and I measured it. It's twenty-four, clear through. He took down mature pine trees. He took down saplings. He took down a whole lot of things. The net effect, though, is that the neighbor, if I may, at the entrance to the site has a clear shot straight up into the drainage basin. And this, of course, was never intended. I know that Raj got a email from a neighbor. I don't know if it made it to the planning board. It never made it to me, which is funny. Uh, but, you know, we consider this pretty significant change. The subcommittee for the FISP met last Thursday, and they directed me to start a remediation plan, but I haven't had a chance to do that. So I'm here to tell you, number one, we know what happened. We're not happy about it. The contractor made an error, and the contractor's gonna pay for the error. So we're gonna develop a remediation plan. We're gonna bring it back to you. We're gonna ask you to accept it as an amendment to the site plan. And I just wanted to float that past you, make sure that you're in the loop. You know what's going on. It was never, it was not deliberate on anybody on the design team. The side contractor went a little out of the realm. So in all likelihood, between us and the neighbor, we're gonna put a row of staggered row pines to, to immediately shield them. And then we'll replace the, the ditch will now become something slightly bigger, I guess. And we'll plant indigenous trees. We'll plant more white pines, more red maples, cherries, and...
That's what's around it right now?
Right now, it's...
No, I mean, ne, next to it.
Yeah.
What was there?
Well, see, yeah, I did a, I did an actual plant count of what was exactly there. So I know precisely the species
Okay.
and the density of the plants that were there prior to the eventual issue, which is fortuitous, I guess. But that's why we're here too. We're written to say that we know what happened. And that if you have any comments, critiques, if you go by, you know...
You should tell Raj. Whatever, whoever sent the email to...
Well, we got, I got a phone call. Raj got an email. Actually, I got two phone calls. And the neighbors are like, well, we...
What's going on?
We were told one thing, and what's going on, which I didn't have an answer for it.
Fair enough.
So that was good, and I'm glad you came in. That was a good thing that it's, we're starting off with a problem, but you addressed the problem adequately.
Yeah, we got it.
So it's one of those things that problems are going to happen, but as long as we're working together to kinda get them solved, that's kind of the biggest issue.
So I've only heard through, casually through the contractor, that it might be another change to the plan, but I really don't think it's gonna be significant. I think along the length where we put the water line, they've hit shallow depths to ledge. I think they wanna relocate where the water line comes in.
In the baseball field there?
It's, uh...
Up the street?
Up here.
Oh, over there, not down the field, okay.
Yeah, I think. They haven't submitted anything formally. And I've heard discussions through with the water district, but I, I haven't been a part of that loop yet. I will be part of that loop because that's part of the civil works that we design. But maybe, whatever meaning you decide to take us to, I may have more information on that and maybe incorporate it if it's significant, or even determine it to be a minor change.
Right, well, the water, we haven't heard anything about. And as far as what you're saying, the swath clearing is definitely not planned, but it's one of those... I'm not sure that, I wouldn't definitely consider it a significant change. It's requiring an amendment. It's something that we probably could do on the ASBIL. And just, we would wanna see a sketch, bringing a sketch plan of how you're gonna, what corrections you're gonna make, where you're gonna put whatever those little plants are.
Just haven't gotten to that.
Yeah, right, it's, it was quick. Uh, but what are the, what's the board's feeling for whether we do it as an amended site plan review or just...
Well, I mean, I don't think that, I mean, not, not that it's tough, but I wouldn't even complicate the whole thing with having to deal with the site plan. If they can do their remediation plan and execute and just keep us informed as to what's going on and, you know, and just fix it and get back to as close to the plan as you can get. I, I mean, I'm, I'm amenable to just, you know, we'll, we'll just know that it's going on and not really do anything about it as far as having to change the site plan, 'cause really you're just getting back to the site plan that we planned on.
I mean, makes sense, yeah?
And you just don't complicate it with having to come in and, you know, and...
Well, that's fine here. I mean, it's your fault entirely.
I mean, I, I like the being informed part.
Yeah.
But I don't think you need to spend time on the drawing to tell us that here is what we wanted, what you ended up with, and what we're back to later. I mean, I think it's, it's just gonna, it's gonna be a lot of CAD work that ends up back to where you wanted it in the first place.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're gonna be in the loop on the remediation plan in any case.
And then, um, and any problems that come up, I guess, if you can't get it, then we'll talk about what we have to do. But like you said, I think on the ASBILs we'll...
That's not gonna be a problem in my opinion. I mean, the general contractor has acknowledged that his sub, his site sub blew it, and he's gonna fix it in one form or another. So that, that has already happened.
That's good.
You know, and we're in the middle of the formal process of notifying the contractor through the contract. And the FISP hasn't met formally since this has happened. I think it's either the third or the ninth. So, uh, they haven't formally responded themselves.
So this, this stuff that got cut is between the retention basins here and the, and that path that goes from Horseshoe Drive?
Yeah, it goes right to the square.
Goes to the path?
Drive path is...
Okay.
You continue on in that lot that's on the side. You continue that line?
This line here?
That guy right there in that lot.
Here.
So pale yellow tops, yeah. He's a straight shot.
Was it actually wetland?
That's why the plant count, I proved conservation, it wasn't. And now that I can see the dirt, it's clear it wasn't wetland, it's wetland.
Now it's all wide open. The sun's shining on it. It's dried up.
So where was the contractor supposed to clear then?
He was not supposed to clear. He was supposed to hand dig. He was supposed to honor the woods. This path was mostly straight. It had some mature pines and things like that. And we just wanted it cleaned up so that it was a clear waterway. He went in and decided his mini excavator couldn't do it. He went in with his big excavator.
Okay.
They made a road.
Yeah, twenty-four feet?
Yeah. I'm not that...
No, it sounds like it was a...
Yeah, that's an error.
I don't know, bad judgment or something like that.
Yeah, in states.
Yeah, it was in the state.
How long ago did that occur?
A week ago, you said?
A we, a week ago?
A week ago from last Friday.
Oh, the thirteenth? Friday the thirteenth?
Yes.
There you go. A little bit inappropriate, I guess.
The site, site super was finishing up another job and, and another count. Clerk of the works wasn't there, and they told him, hurry up, go, go, go. He did.
He was on a mission.
Right now, he's done.
Well, he's done.
Well, it wasn't an assault, she was unfamiliar.
All right, so what do we think here?
I agree with Mark.
Let it go. We don't need an amended site plan review. We just keep us informed. Let us see the plan of what is being proposed for remediation.
Yeah, sketches.
We can talk about that at our next meeting.
Okay.
And I guess the other question is, do you think formalizing it into on the site plan would help your case, whatever, so that it won't happen again or something like that? I mean, is that...
It's not gonna happen.
Okay, all right, so then, yeah.
Oh, boy, I shouldn't have. No, I have to formalize it onto the site plan to give it to him and say, this is what you are going to do. And I'll be doing it with taxonomic names, sizes, and everything else. I mean, we can't replace, from what I recall, there was a twenty-four-inch white pine, eighteen-inch white pine, twelve-inch cherry. There's some fairly big trees. When I replace those in kind, we'll probably put fifty or sixty saplings and the pine trees to get the neighbors some screening.
Did they clear the trees that were dangerous? There was one of the neighbors at the public hearing was talking about some dangerous big trees that, uh, were in that area. And did they do any selective clearing of those trees? I hadn't heard anything else.
Nothing was selectively cleared. It was a twenty-four-foot wide straight road. And there were some fall downs near to it. That didn't, those didn't, those are outside. Well, all of us have done a little amount of work, but no, I don't think they, they, they got any widow makers down there closer to the property line.
That might be a benefit to the neighbors to kinda say, well, instead of fining this guy or something like that, can you do the work and clean these up?
Good point.
But something like that might be good for remediation.
So how will the remediation plan be officially noted on the whole project documentation?
Well, you're gonna have a, a story that you ask him to do, a document.
Yes.
I mean, not just that document we can have a...
And then, and then it'll be documented on the ASBIL. I don't know that it'll show the individual trees. He's paying for it, so...
No, I don't. I'd rather have something with the neighbors. Putting marks on plan don't matter. If we can help the neighbors that are impacted to do some of the things that probably wouldn't have gotten done in the first place, might make it a little bit more palatable.
Although, somebody will have to be there to watch this guy.
Yeah.
How many trees is he gonna take down to get to that?
Right.
We've got people watching it, so...
I cut in another road.
You can really say.
All right, so that's good. Um, thank you for coming in. Thank you for this...
Thank you.
Worked out well.
I love not to see you.
Do you have electronic? Do you have that electronic so you can send it out to all the people that complained?
Um, I think they got copies already. 'Cause the phone call stopped. All right, that's great. Um, okay, what else is on? Girls, go. Continue. All right, so do we have any reports from, oh, no, Wayne, what do we have?
I owe you a couple of construction reports. Larry has, did confirm that he's been coordinating with Greg Wamboldt on ninety Sterling, and he's been out there for a reactivity.
Yes, okay, good.
Like four reports that I need to get to you, but he'll be coming. He's been, he confirmed that they've been communicating. He's called all the time. Like four reports that I need to get to you, but he'll be coming. He's been, he confirmed that they've been communicating. He's called all the time.
Excellent.
And he did go by, um, one thirty-five, and it looks like, well, they have done some work. Looks like they're basically working on buildings right now, so it doesn't appear a lot of site work going on.
Which one?
One thirty-five shoes were sorry.
Oh, one thirty-seven?
I'm sorry, one thirty-seven.
What about, what's that, what's that wall going in along the line? Is that on the plan?
Um, I, I didn't confirm that.
I don't remember seeing it on the plan, but.
It doesn't ring a bell with me either, so if you saw a, like a.
It's a nice block wall, but.
It's beautiful.
On the right-hand side of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, the south side.
Interesting. All right, I'll, I'll ask about it. He was out there, took some pictures, so I'll ask him.
There's a huge available for sale sign up there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that means a sign by law, but.
For what?
No.
I was front of one thirty-nine or so, available, land available or site available for development.
Is that the, that's the Alvis Group building?
It's the next one up?
They're putting a chain in there.
Apparently there is. They were there like on Sunday one, one day.
Do they, what else, for, uh, we've got a bunch of sites that are like hopefully finishing up construction or?
Which ones?
Curtis, did we, we're done with Curtis. Whatever happened, there was an ASBIL. Have we gotten the ASBIL back on Curtis, the final certification review?
The other McCarty project?
Is that, yeah, Seventy Hartwell?
ASBIL, I don't remember.
I thought we had a couple of certifications that, like two.
I know that we did. So he might not have submitted for cert. I don't.
Cause we, he got in there on a temporary occupancy, but they, I thought they submitted the plans, and then I don't remember doing anything on it.
Ja, I know Jack and Patrick met out there and they went over everything. Maybe he did.
I don't think there were any problems. I just think we haven't closed that.
Yeah. Okay, so that was seventy, right?
Seventy Hartwell, yeah, is that, right. And I don't know if there's.
I, it occurred to me while I was sitting here, did you send me a draft approval for Western Circle? I never answered you.
Yes, but that's coming up at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, my email comes like this, and all this, the next page is gone, down there somewhere, and I haven't come to it yet.
Yep, and I'm looking for comments on the Western Circle subdivision draft approval.
Okay.
We got an extension from them, but we blew it on the timing. We're over by a month, but.
So it's approved?
They gave us an extension. Well, it's approved, but they need to really get the paperwork to make it real, so it's easier for them to just.
Can we talk about it?
Well, that's the process. We're not talking about the site. It's just.
I'm just wondering what's happened, like with the, we asked them if they were.
No, we can't talk about that.
No, all right.
We can't talk about.
So you, you sent the draft, and you want some comment?
Yes, I just look at your guys. You sent it to town council. Haven't heard anything back. But I said it was for two weeks from now.
That's all I had.
Yep.
Can I just ask you a quick question about Ninety Sterling Street?
Me? You try.
Uh, you're as in butter.
Well, didn't have to.
Okay, so I think we're all set with you.
Great, thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Deal with Dave on the way out. And we're, we'll still be here. Any other board meetings? Do you, Housing, Affordable Housing Trust?
I think we had it at the last meeting, but we had a.
At our joint meeting.
What?
We had our joint meeting.
We had a joint meeting.
A joint meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Okay, I got an email on that this morning.
Yeah, so they've drafted a, a article.
So when did you guys finally meet?
Fifteenth, sixteenth.
So last week?
The holiday.
Yes, Patriots' Day.
I came back from the marathon. I went to the meeting.
You weren't too tired?
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
It was a little chilly that day.
Yeah, it was rainy. Yeah, it was tough.
It was, he wore the shorts, you know.
Oh, that's a, that's a, um, all right.
So we talked about a wide, we talked about everything, but the, the meeting came down to the moratorium because we don't have anything in place, and so we, like many other towns, are applying for, you know, a moratorium so that we can get zoning in place and other regulations in place.
So we got this wording from town council, like here?
Well, this came from Nina.
I, I think so.
From KP Law. So it's the first line is what it says. So that, that sounds good. So do we want to, so you guys met once? Was there any public input? Was there any feedback? Cause I remember at the October town meeting, it got shot down because people didn't have any chance to provide input, and.
Well, it was a posted meeting.
Well, but did anyone know about it on Patriots' Day?
It was a, it was a, um, public meeting, uh, broadcast.
Yeah, but did, we hold public hearings encouraging people. So, I mean, that's what I'm afraid of, is that we're gonna go to town.
We weren't ready for the public to come. We're good, we're planning on, if, as we proceed, the, that meeting was to decide that if we should have a moratorium or not, and that's really what we decided is that the placeholder in the warrant is gonna be to ask the, if the town will approve a, a moratorium.
Temporary moratorium.
So that we get time to make our real bylaw.
Which, which is when we need the real public input.
Right, that's when we need the real, so this is really the meeting was just to decide if we want to do the moratorium or not.
It's a pre-meeting.
Pre-meeting. Well, it's to buy time to do the real zoning bylaw.
Which, and we have the time to do it, I assume, is that?
We, yeah.
We scheduled another meeting for them.
And he handed out a, a bunch of different towns', um, proposals. Grafton was the best one.
Moratorium proposals or?
No, well, I think.
Proposals for regulations about marijuana establishments. Um, and theirs was the most concise and well-written. I guess they're one of the first ones to, I guess.
I think they did approve.
They sent, well, they sent it into the state. I don't know, I don't know if they've gotten approval back from the state yet.
But they went to town meeting.
Approved the town meeting, and it has to get approved by the AGs.
AG, yeah, so.
So that's.
So that's good, so hopefully can be done?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think.
And, and so the Board of Health is gonna look at extending their tobacco smoking regulations to.
That was interesting.
Be more generic or more specific that it also includes marijuana smoking.
So that people don't start smoking marijuana in restaurants.
Right, cause right now this is tobacco smoking, yeah.
Yeah. Instead of cigarettes.
And is that anything to do with this, or is that a separate track?
No, no.
No, but, but they were, they were at the meeting.
Separate, separate track. They can, they can do that without any input from the town or town meeting action.
Yes, they can do regulations, so that's, yeah, that's good.
Right. Um, and it's up to us to do any zoning?
Is, yes?
So.
Right, folks, thank you.
Can I do that?
Anyway.
Thank you for coming.
And the goal, the goal is to, I guess, does this mention a date?
For our next meeting?
No, a date for how long the moratorium will be.
Oh.
We talked about, we talked about the end of the year since the state.
Yeah, December thirty-first.
Okay, the state, the state indicated that's.
It does have that.
That's a reasonable date. They really would consider anything past that to be too long. So the goal would be to put something formal on the town meeting warrant in October for all the regulations.
Okay.
So it means we gotta start, you know, we gotta start thinking about it.
Yeah, that, that's kind of my point. We probably should have started thinking about it because to go to town meeting now.
I know. Yes.
We have to post this.
Yes, and it's, and we're not.
Public hearing, and it needs fourteen days, which means more than fourteen days to get it into the newspaper.
Well, but this isn't a zoning bylaw.
It is a zoning change is what it says.
It's two bylaws. It's a general bylaw.
I meant town zoning bylaw by adding in the first line.
Oh, bad, okay. I thought this was the moratorium function differently.
A temporary moratorium on adult marijuana use.
So it is gonna change zoning?
Are you saying we don't have enough time?
Well, not with our current meeting scheduled unless you get, so now we're gonna have to hold a special meeting.
Goodness, okay. I didn't know that's how the moratorium functioned to change zoning.
Well, they could have done it as a general bylaw, but for some reason they chose to do it as a zoning bylaw. I don't, I was hoping that would have been discussed at the.
We did not, we did not discuss that nuance at the meeting.
We did discuss a zoning bylaw and having those meetings, but not for this one, the moratorium one.
Why was this, why is this a zoning bylaw?
Cause that's the way.
That's probably the moratorium on the zoning bylaw.
That's the way, I need to ask KP Law to make it, I guess.
Maybe.
I mean, I don't know. It's, there, there's two options to make it happen.
Because the regula, well, let me ask you this. The regulations about how far a certain establishment can be from a school or church or another establishment, all that stuff, is that all zoning?
Generally zoning, yes. So the bylaws itself are definitely a zoning issue. The moratorium could have been a general, I think, and it.
Does it have to be a by, the moratorium doesn't have to be a bylaw, I guess is the question.
It doesn't, it has to be a bylaw. It could be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, I thought, but what we've gotten proposed is for it to be a zoning bylaw.
Is that, can that be changed?
Oh, it's probably because it says the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for an adult-use marijuana establishment. Probably because it is the use of land.
Because it affects zoning, it has to be a zoning bylaw. The moratorium has to be a zoning bylaw?
That's what we're asking for a moratorium.
It talks about use, usually that's zoning, does use.
Oh, well, the moratorium shall be in, in fact, through the date, and they didn't put the date in, so.
But there's no additional action required by this board, correct?
Except, no, if, if in fact is a zoning bylaw, it's all us to get the public hearings and all that kind of stuff, so. No, but if it's gonna go through as a zoning bylaw, that's the way it's gonna be.
All, all we discussed was is to have an article put on the warrant to ask to, to have the voters approve a moratorium until December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. Once we got that and got that approved, then we would start having discussions about a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw for our recreational marijuana, similar to what West Boils, I mean, uh, West Barrow did. They have two bylaws. They have a general bylaw and they have a zoning bylaw, where both of them, they, it's not allowed at all.
Right.
So.
So.
So I guess, I don't know. I, I must have been sleeping at that meeting. That's the understanding that I, like, there was just a moratorium.
And you guys didn't hear?
Man, I don't.
I had no idea that the moratorium would be a zoning bylaw that would require additional action by this board.
Yeah, I, well, it sounds like, like some of the language. Um, we're having a moratorium until such time as the town adopts zoning bylaw amendments that regulate personal.
Well, but that's, she worded it this way, cause it's a zoning article.
I don't understand why a moratorium is a zoning bylaw.
Well, I, I think the moratorium, it's a moratorium on zoning bylaws, and that's why it's going through as a zoning bylaw.
I don't know.
Okay, so given that that's the way it's worded.
So with that wording, assuming that it stays as a zoning thing, which may be the only way it's gonna happen for this town meeting, because it ha, the meeting, town meeting is the twenty-first Monday. We need to hold a public hearing prior to that, so, and it need, so then it needs to be posted in the.
Squeeze in, is it?
It needs to be posted in the Telegram and Gazette fourteen days in advance.
Fourteen days before?
The public hearing itself for this. So when, what's the earliest? Melanie, what's the earliest we could have a public hearing for this? Not one of our regular meeting dates, but what?
Do we have to have it on, okay?
It can be any day.
No, I'm just looking at the sixteenth is a, it's gotta just be prior to the town meeting.
It has to be, any town.
Actually, midnight works if we, if we publish today. That's fourteen days from today.
Right, it would work if we had it published today, but it takes two days, I think. Is it two days for the Telegram and Gazette to process it, to post it?
Yeah, today's Wednesday would be for a, would have been Wednesday at two though, Wednesday at two to publish for a Monday.
What, what is the, so what is the first, it could be published on Monday if we told them tomorrow?
No, if we, no, today is Wednesday, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, Wednesday at two for Monday public, public.
What about, what do we get for a Thursday at two?
Um, I'd have to look. I just only know Monday, uh, for Mondays, cause that's how my meetings are on Monday. So I'm not cabinet by Wednesday at two.
So if it's published on May first, Monday, Tuesday, May first.
I have to look at that, but the list I have in the office shows what.
Assuming that it just goes at that same rate, so we need it in on Wednesday for the two weeks plus Monday in front of that. So if we do it on Friday.
Do what on Friday?
Make the contact, um, contacts that are Telegram and Gazette.
This Friday?
And post, yes, and post the, ask them to post this public hearing. What's the date that we end up getting?
We have on Friday, then it's sooner, but it can go in.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I have to look. I have to shoot.
Probably like the first or second.
So let's say it's, if it's Friday, so the second is next, next one?
No, no, no.
Would it be two weeks from now?
If it goes in Friday, and it, it won't be in the Monday's paper or the, maybe the Tuesday's paper.
Could be Tuesday or so.
So let's say it goes in on.
The Wednesday paper.
For the first, or the, if it's the, goes in for the first, it's the first and the eighth we'd have to have it.
Yeah, so then we'd have to meet on the.
Fourteen days from this last publication?
So we would have to meet on the fifteenth.
No, I think it's fourteen days from the first publication.
It's too late.
Well, we can meet on a Thursday.
Seventeenth?
That's, that's about it.
That's what I mean, is that.
And what day is the, what day is the town meeting?
Apparently the twenty-first.
So how many days do you have to have a public hearing before the town meeting?
Well, we.
Minutes.
Yeah, I think you can't have.
Okay, with a minute. Oh, it doesn't matter.
You can have it right before. It's not good practice.
We've done that, we did that with the, uh, at the last one, we had it like a week before.
Because we keep getting poor planning from other people, it gets thrown at us at the last minute. Well, do something, take care of it, and I'm kind of tired with it. Unless it was this important, I would just say, the heck with it. Deal with it next October. You guys.
We just have to be careful about the, the two weeks because we got to dig in on that.
I'm a little, I'm a little miffed that no, you know, nobody, was not mentioned at all. It would have to be zoning.
I thought it was just a warrant article.
I thought the slot was already there on the warrant article for a moratorium. They were just gonna slide the wording in, and everybody, everybody would be.
That's all we said. That's all we talked about at the meeting, was doing that.
That's all we did.
So I will check with Anita, ask her if there's some way to make it a general bylaw, so it's not a zoning bylaw.
Right.
The general bylaws, do they not get?
Selectmen have to deal with it. They're gonna meet, they're gonna do all their regular stuff.
No, no, let's do, if it's, needs a public hearing.
It always needs a public hearing.
So let's just do it.
They promised to do a public hearing at the October town meeting when it got voted down. Oh, yeah, we're gonna have a lot of feedback. We're gonna have a public hearing. Well, let's see it.
We'll need public hearings for the changes we're making, the real changes we make to the zoning laws. This is just a moratorium to give us time, so.
Right, but you still have to have a meeting.
We don't need input on the moratorium.
But the public may not want, I mean, at the last one, they didn't want the prohibition, and they may not wanna have this, so we should just be doing it right to start with. Where do you go?
Okay, when Raj and I reached the train that they had in February, it was the state, okay?
Yeah.
And Raj has the, the printout.
Yep.
They said that right now, the planning board, the ZVA, the Board of Health, and the Selectmen should be getting together to, you know, start the process. We had, and then we had to submit names, which we did, and we had the meeting on the sixteenth. The only thing that was discussed was that we were gonna get to put it out and see if the town, you know, would approve the moratorium until December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. There was nothing ever mentioned about any kind of a zoning bylaw, that we had to have public hearings before the town meeting or anything. Now, now they're saying that that is, why was that not told to us on the sixteenth? Because if we were told on the sixteenth, then we could have said, okay, fine, we need to do this, and we would have already got it done. Now, it's gonna come down to the point, now it's gonna come down to the point where everything is gonna be rush, 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 and if we don't have, and if we don't have that public hearing before town meeting, now that's gonna get pushed off until, so somebody dropped the ball, but they said, you know, they wanted us to have, you know, we got everybody's names. We set up, you know, Ruchio set up, uh, Mr. Ruchio set up an appointment, you know, in a meeting agenda. Everybody agreed that the sixteenth was the best time to do it, and like I said, that's the only thing. Nothing was ever discussed about that the moratorium is gonna be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw or anything. It was just to get it on the warrant so that people could vote, so that they know that we have until the, till the thirty-first of December to start planning this. That's all that was ever mentioned. So this, all this additional stuff is BS.
Well, that's the first I've heard about it, and you know the reason for the moratorium is since we're, we're, we're at risk for somebody coming in and, oh.
As of July first.
Yeah, it's put anywhere. So with no moratorium and no zoning bylaws to protect the town, to regulate it, then we're really at risk.
Right.
So I don't, the town, the town would be crazy.
We have a bylaw that states about medicinal marijuana, so like Mr. Anderson said, if somebody, if we didn't have a moratorium and somebody did come in, then they could use that and say, okay, well, we're gonna put it over, over in this area. We wanna make sure that we have, so that's, like you said, that's the only thing that was, you know, discussed. That's it.
And whether, whether you're pro pot or anti pot, I would think you'd vote for the moratorium in any case.
I, I think that that's how you have to, that's how you have to bring it on.
I think, I get the feeling that people are gonna worry about the.
Well, let's try to get it in the paper and have a meeting on the seventeen, have a.
I, I think that we shouldn't toss it back to.
Are people available for the seventeen?
Well, yeah, I, I can be.
Can you check, um, Melanie to see when we need to get it posted in the paper?
Yeah, and, and just try to, I mean, we can toss it back to the board's level, but I don't think it's gonna work out.
Oh, okay.
You know, I don't think that they're gonna do it.
Right, so the seventeenth is Thursday, what about the Tuesday before that?
The fifteenth?
Is that possible to do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday? Is that possible to do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday?
If, if they publish it on the May, on May first and May eighth.
What's that?
What are you talking about, to actually meet?
To hold a meeting, yeah.
So when you guys are available.
But it depends if the Telegram Gazette can publish it on May first and eighth.
And we'll find that out tomorrow, I can find out from you folks here whether you're available on the fifteenth.
I'll make it on the, oh.
I can do fifteenth or seventeenth.
Tuesday or the Thursday, just in case we need a second date.
No, I, Tuesday's better for me.
Tuesday's better?
So you know, the fifteenth is candidate night, and the seventeenth is Z B A night, is Z B A meeting.
Uh, don't we have a planning board meeting on the fifteenth? Oh, no, the ninth.
Ninth.
No, no, that's on our week.
So Tuesday, I can't make it on the seventeenth, I can make it on the fifteenth.
I think that's gonna be too tight to the publishing.
So the fifteenth?
I can do the fifteenth, but I, I think that's, could you do the sixteenth?
Can I do the sixteenth?
It's gonna be candidate night.
Um, I can do the sixteenth.
Wednesday the sixteenth? No, Wednesday nights I have soccer until seven thirty, I could do it after seven thirty.
You could do that.
Okay, I, I just think that the fifteenth is gonna not work with the published paper dates. We're gonna, we're infringing on our two weeks.
Okay.
I mean, we can try.
You could, so the sixteenth could be at seven thirty or af, or after?
Sixteenth I can do at seven thirty or.
Seven thirty, well, that sounds.
I'm gonna try to contact Anita and ask her to see if Nancy can schedule the public hearing. She's been years working with the Telegram Gazette, and if we need a little leeway, she might be able to make that happen.
Is it, you think it's still possible we could not make it a zoning moratorium?
That's the first question, I'm gonna ask about why is it a zoning bylaw?
Maybe, maybe it has to be.
And then if it has to be, then we're having trouble getting a meeting and doing something, and we need to post it, we need a form, so.
I could do the sixteenth.
Yeah, the posting has to have the date, so that's why we need to.
I could do the sixteenth.
So people are available seven o'clock on the fifteenth?
Seven thirty.
Or seven thirty on the six, um, seven thirty on the sixteenth?
Yes, I, that's okay for me.
Okay, for me.
How about you?
I can do the sixteenth.
Not the fifteenth?
Uh, uh, the fifteenth?
Yes, I'm just trying to have an alternate.
I should be able to do.
It's a regular Wednesday meeting night.
Yeah, I should be.
Well, the fifteenth is Tuesday.
Oh, no, you're not available Tuesday, are you?
Tuesday's fine.
He can't do Thursday.
Not Thursday?
He can't do Thursday.
He can do Tuesday, fifteenth, or sixteenth, Wednesday.
I can do Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah, I should be able to do that.
All right, so I need different dates, so Tuesday, the fifteenth?
Yep.
Yes.
At seven o'clock, or Wednesday the sixteenth?
Zero thirty.
Oh, that's right, Wednesday, that's why.
Why, why seven thirty?
Soccer practice, I'm coaching soccer.
We were interested in pouring wine that day.
Wait, when's the police station thing? Oh, that's in Friday.
What day? What are you talking about?
And we're gonna do, we're gonna walk the police station, May third, were you here for that?
Third.
We're gonna, May third, we're gonna go and walk the police station site, seven o'clock.
No, I was.
We're not gonna call first, or we're gonna wear like black hoodies and stuff, and walk around the police station.
Hold on, May third.
We'll get a good view.
Thursday, May third.
All right, so I will talk to Anita.
The police one?
Checking on why it's zoning, seven.
Are you gonna have somebody post that May third thing?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, May third.
Okay.
And so I'm gonna check on why it's a zoning bylaw, whether it needs to be a zoning bylaw, and if it does, we need to get it posted for the public hearing.
But in either case, something needs to be posted, either a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, something needs to go on the paper.
Yes.
It does, oh.
I'm pretty sure there has to be a public hearing.
It says either ours or.
You still have a public hearing?
On the general stuff, yeah, I think so.
On zoning bylaws.
The planning board has to?
No.
No, that's what, that's what it pushes it up to the board's election.
Right, and the Selectmen are doing public hearings all the time, so, but we'll see, I mean, we'll see how it all works out. So that's good, what else do you have in my little package?
So she's gonna do on tomorrow morning, she's gonna contact the paper, or Nancy is gonna contact the paper?
We can talk in the morning, if you want to figure out what we're doing now.
Yep, we can talk and find out how long and that stuff, okay. All right, did I get everything in my pile here?
Department of Environmental Protection.
Oh, the D E P one, what's that? Oh, the chapter ninety one, or, this was more that we may get people coming to us to do, um, waterfront stuff, but we don't have waterfront unless.
Well, I'll do waterfront stuff, I don't wanna have a beach.
Unless the D C R wants to add docks on their reservoir, I don't really see a lot of activity.
Or maybe not, yeah.
They could come in and ask questions. Oh, the devol, department revolving funds.
Yeah.
Not real exciting, but we have a revolving fund for V H B.
Yep.
And town council and any other consultant reviews. I looked at the wording and it sets a limit of fifty thousand dollars per year for that account, which seems pretty high, but if we've got V H B monitoring, what is it?
Ten five thousand dollar.
Right now, we have four site plan reviews under review, so let's say those are five thousand or seven thousand each, if they go around a couple of times. These two were rated out, so that was good, I don't think they're gonna be that expensive. But you're looking at twenty thousand right there, construction inspection is another five thousand or so each year for each project. And that's one thirty seven, is a couple other projects that are under construction, uh.
So you think we're gonna bump to fifty thousand?
I think we're gonna be close to fifty thousand, and then we've got the as-built plan reviews, so that's usually another couple thousand. As well as our, when we use up the budget that we're allowed for salary, our clerk salary and expenses come out of this account as well.
I think not have to be able to help you.
Nah, gee, I don't believe that.
I don't believe to pay Cheryl her salary for the years she's spent on the board.
Can we give her gas cards so she can deliver the stupid things?
No, no, so I think we may wanna up that amount, and I'm not sure of how much.
Double.
Shall we go to se, if we go to seventy thousand, does that seem like we should be?
Does it matter?
Well, it does, because we don't, it's gonna be a town meeting, so we don't wanna be standing up and saying, we want two million dollars in this account.
It's exciting.
Would be nice, but, um, I don't know that we have a need for that, so.
We're the only one with fifty, the other guy's got sixty, Board of Health has sixty?
They don't have as much going on.
Cemetery trustees have sixty?
Now, well, the Board of Health is in the Board of Health Alliance, and they have a septic system reviewer and.
Yeah, well, they have the worst earth, they contract worst all the time.
Yeah, the Alliance, yeah, so they have a lot of that stuff, so.
We can make it seventy or, seventy or seventy-five, right, seventy or seventy-five, those things always pass.
I don't think, so I'll just ask for it to be up to seventy-five, cause do you have any record of what we spent in the last couple of years? I can ask that, I can ask that.
Bonnie must know.
I'm sure Bonnie knows, but, um, evolving.
Landfill lease is sixty thousand?
A lease?
Go to a hundred. Landfill lease.
That's the light department paying the town for the lease.
Is it sixty thousand? I think it's a dollar.
I didn't think so, but I thought that's what it was, cause we, actually, we need a final site plan review on that. We haven't gotten an as-built from the light department on the solar field. I mean, we, we gotta make a rest.
We need an automated, like, web thing, and like, at certain like milestones, it automatically sends an email, and then like, after some time, it sends an email every day, boom, 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 and then they just, they just.
I think I tried that for the letter on Sarabian, it hasn't worked yet.
It didn't, no, I don't read emails, I have to go to people that read emails. I texted you about that, on your phone.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Mark, you're so funny.
No, I think it should be automated, like with these new forms, you know, once everything's filled out, that's when you can submit the form.
Well, I would love to have that.
Can't submit unfilled forms.
When the form gets submitted, timer goes off and you have, cause we have ninety days or a hundred and fifty days.
Exactly.
So a trigger would come, that would be great, you wanna work on that too?
Is Karen retired yet?
Karen's new.
What?
Unless it's just written in the calendar, so it pops up on my day.
Right, write it on the calendar, all right, so we reviewed minutes, approved payments?
I didn't report from all boards.
Oh, we saw more, what other boards?
The town planning committee?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so I emailed everyone last night, um, basically what I did was I went through Chris Olson's, the documents that he came down a year ago. And I took off all the changes, and that's what I forwarded on to you.
Made it right, that's it.
Yeah, that's what I did, um, to be honest with you, it was right at the beginning of the town planning committee meeting, because I haven't had a chance to do that yet, so I really did it last night. I think that they're shooting for like an end of July meeting.
Excellent.
For town planning committee, um, to go over some other chapters. They were hoping to do the zoning chapter, I just don't know, um, who's gonna be taking over, um, for this committee.
I don't either.
Next, and, um, there's not.
A new member.
She wanted to meet in May, I think she's gonna put something out to people when they could meet, but, you know, my availability of M A is limited, um, and other people were a little bit limited too. So I'm not quite sure if there's gonna be another meeting in May, and, um, so I have the document also on my laptop as Chris had it before those changes, um, I'm not quite sure where this is gonna go next, but, um, I did tell them that I was not going to be on the planning board.
But you'll stay on the committee?
No, I can't be a planning board rep. I can't do it.
You could be the public.
You could just be a public seat, seat there.
There's a public seat, it's like five open public seats.
I don't think they, I don't think they need a public, I don't think they need a public seat.
That's almost as good as the fire department doesn't have anything to do with public safety.
They need thing com.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just fire safety, they don't care about traffic safety, things like that.
Yeah, I'm not really invested in this committee.
Really? All right.
Well, if that's all I have to do, I'll jump on.
No, well, we'll see, we, after we have the election, we'll have that.
Well, see, the problem is, yeah, so the problem is just this chapter, it's really looking at this chapter.
The zoning chapter?
The zoning chapter that I sent last night, reading it over, seeing if it looks like it.
How many pages is it?
And then the board should really vote to see if, uh, it was less than twelve pages, I thought, did you print it out?
I didn't print it out, but I thought I looked at it.
It was about, it, with all the changes, it's about five or six pages, and it really, it could be shorter than more than that too, I think. So it's really us taking a look at. Yeah, it is, I guess you printed it out. The one.
That's short, it's twelve pages.
Well, this is eight pages and there's some pictures in there.
Maybe eight.
I like pictures.
Yeah, there's a few graphs in here, so, I mean, it's probably about six pages worth of reading here.
So you could do that.
I don't know, I'll make it through one or two.
Or less, five, this is some.
Online, in an email, or is it the one that's?
Actually, it's, it's less, it's not even, it's not even six pages, because it's just, it's, it's actually not even that long, of a document now.
Yeah, I glanced through it, some of the stuff, I wasn't sure what year the data was from, cause it talks about chapter sixty-one lands, and I know we had some things taken.
Email, Chris?
Yeah, right.
That's email.
Oh, she sends it.
Yeah, I sent this last night, it does need to be reviewed, because some of it is older stuff.
The flo, more floppy disk stuff?
No floppy.
Yeah, I don't think there's any floppy disk stuff in it, but, um, it should be reviewed, we should read it and then decide what we wanna take off of it. And this was already pared down a lot from the previous document, the previous document was about twenty pages.
Oh, it's a good thing it ends on that one.
Yeah, um, so.
All right, so we'll plan on looking at that.
At some point, yeah.
Yes.
Maybe like.
It's gonna be the new person that takes her seat.
Second meeting in May?
Just to leave out the agenda all the time, just as a reminder?
Not for the next meeting, next meeting is.
I wouldn't do the night, the night is way too busy, maybe the one after that.
Right.
And then we can see if there's a May meeting, but.
Okay.
So that's kind of up in the air, um, uh, we do talk about the planning board not taking ownership of this.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And that was a problem, or that's okay?
No, that was okay.
Okay, good.
Wasn't like blamey shaming?
No, no, it was just, uh, I said, I hadn't brought the notes with me, but I said according to the zoning bylaws, it's not really, I mean, boy, so, um.
Coordination is good, but.
Yeah, and so after, and after these chapters, what they wanna do is be able to have the different, review all the documents together and see what's crossed, like what's touching into the other areas and affecting one another, and so that's like, yeah, kinda analyzing each of the chapters and.
Good.
Yeah, so after the public hearing parts of it, that will be the next part.
Good, all right, anything else?
Nope, not for me.
Um, Transportation, Bush, Jackson has all these action items to do behind the C M R P C and all this stuff about traffic counts and getting the center of town project.
What's?
Getting it all set?
Traffic counts for the center of town, or just traffic counts for the town? Cause every year we get free traffic counts from C M R P C and we send them somewhere, and in the past.
You send it somewhere.
Well, five years ago, they asked the planning board where they wanted, where we wanted, because we were looking at some project sites, and we thought it might be nice to do some like organized analyses. And we sent them a list of sites, and then for some reason, the select board changed it, cause they wanted to get numbers for something else, and I'm not sure if it was the school or some other projects.
Somebody had a map of center of town with the location of the various traffic count, things, wires, whatever you call them.
Okay.
So he, he had all the action items to call C M R P C, so not much, not much really happened, we just wonder where those items expressed an interest, unless there's good going on this.
How are they doing on the triangle evaluation, the center of town? Oh, that's the whole, that's the one, oh, okay, it's not just the all around town, cause there's, so that's a separate.
Just this, yeah, just this.
So this area of town, so that's good, so the center.
And talked about having, you know, public input to get ideas for the center of town, and of course, you can't do that, just as an open-ended question, cause you'll get all sorts of people.
We should have an airport.
Suggesting flying saucers or, you know, overpasses or tunnels.
Rotary with a monorail.
We're, we're looking to C M R P C to, to sort of be there and to, you know, any possible hearings to guide people toward what's reasonable and have some information of it, and, you know, we wanna change the center of town, and just sit there and ask for, you know, you have to be directing people some sort of, a sense of absorption, so.
That sounds.
That's that, so next, we're meeting on May, oh. May third, I think.
Oh, okay.
Gotta check, I gotta check that, I might not be able to make.
Is Larry still on the board?
Which, which, which one's Larry?
He was the chair.
He's the chair, yeah, he's the chair, he was there.
Okay.
And there's the other guy. Sort of tall guy. Without name tags, I wear the suit, I've gotta know you for like a year or so.
He's my neighbor, this is awful.
All right, um, so any other boards?
No.
No.
Nope.
So we have motion to adjourn?
Continue?
Oh, yeah, cause you already did the minutes, yeah.
What do they do at the town meeting?